The bid, which is Exhibit A, is from the Economic Development Authority, signed by the Chair, Ms. Dorothy L. Wood. Second bid is a bid signed by Mr. Richard Maddox. And he's signing on behalf of Sea Escape Corporation of Virginia Beach, 315 Oceanfront LLC, Sen Hotel LLC, and Roland Court LLC. The third bid is a bid from the Virginia Beach Pier Place Development LLC, signed by Lee Westnedge, General Counsel for Virginia Beach Pier Place Development LLC. I will read the summaries of the bids that have been received at the formal session of City Council this evening. We'll now move on to the...
I assume after the reading publicly, that part that's not proprietary will be posted and available to the public. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Next item is the Princess Anne TCC Hotel update. Mr. Herr.
It's been some time since we've been before you with an update on this project, so we thought it was timely to come before you today. There are some items that are on the near future that we wanted to make you aware of, and there have been some actions made to move us toward a term sheet. Very quickly, just as a bit of historic background, we, the city owns property there at the entrance of the Tywhar Community College entrance off of Princess Anne Road. We initiated this process back in 2013, conducted a feasibility study. Feasibility study came back and reported the market, if you will, and gave us a sense of what the hotel room count could be with regard to, at the time, their assessment of the marketplace. Quite frankly, additively, we think, just based on the historical record regarding activities at the park and what has come in since then with regard to the Veterans Care Facility, the work that we're doing, obviously, in the Biopark. There's certainly substantial justification for a hotel to be in that corridor or to support both the recreational activities as well as the business activities, not to also include, you know, operations like, or facilities like Operation Smile and Life Net and the others. We, the Development Authority, on behalf of the city issued an RFP. We issued an updated based on a failed attempt to come to terms with the initial submittal, another RFP back in May of 2017. At that time, we did select Harmony Hospitality LLC. Serving on that evaluation team included a representative from TCC, Mike Summers; at the time, our Parks and Rec Director, Mike Culvert; Nancy Hellman, as you well know, who serves as our Sports Marketing Director within CVB, myself, and Jeff Smith, who's joined me here today. The property, again, is there at the entrance of Community College Place and Princess Anne Road. There's actually two parcels that the city owns there, at the gateway, if you will, into the campus proper. We put both pieces of property out in that solicitation in the response back and early assessment on how to phase this project and phase the property. It was ultimately decided to go forward with developing the first phase on the corner there, that initial 3.96 parcel, and then phase additional expansion, could be an expansion of existing or could be a brand-new or an additional hotel on the option property, the one there at 2.5 acres. This is an updated presentation from the one that we put in your packet on Friday, so there's been some updated information, and hopefully you have this at your place to follow, if you as well. We had to do a substantial amount of review of site work and infrastructure as it relates to putting this property into a stream of development. We did have a lot of work done to evaluate and identify an appropriate sewer utility route. The two visuals that you see there represent some initial work, or the initial work we did in terms of how do you get access to the pump station that's off of Rosemont toward the rear of the property. Initially, our desire was to do a straight linear shot from the property back to the pump station. We had a conversation with Tywhar Community College. I think there were some hesitance on their part. They have a substantial amount of their own infrastructure in this corridor, not only to include fiber, but also some other utility work. And so we had to look at an additional or an alternative to that design, which we ultimately settled on what we're calling Option B, where we're actually going to follow the Ring Road, if you will, you know, back to the sewer pump station that's being upgraded as we speak there off of Rosemont. So it took a lot of work in terms of assessing those options. There was actually another option that was a little, was extremely cost prohibitive, but these two options ended up being the two that we really drilled down on, and ultimately, we selected Option B. From that, it required us to get approvals from both the TCC Community Board, if you will, as well as the Virginia Community College System for approval, which we've received in terms of the routing, if you will, now for the utilities that will provide sewer to the site. So that's a good thing. We've also, during this time period, conducted a wetlands delineation on the property. We did uncover some, what is commonly referred to as low-quality, isolated, non-title wetlands, less than a half an acre on the site. There is a plan to mitigate that, that has been determined, and we're in the process now, once, in confirming our findings with the Army Corps of Engineers, to go through DEQ to earn the permitting relative to the mitigation of those isolated, non-title wetlands. The product, I think when we last briefed you, we talked about the Home Two Suites product, which is a product by Hilton. Since then, it's been determined that a better product for the market and for the area would be a Hampton Inn and Suites by Hilton. It's the same, if not better, upscale, mid-price, contemporary hotel product that will service, in our opinion, both during the week, the business community that, no doubt, I think will enjoy the amenities in the corridor, and then, of course, during the weekend, all of the teams and activities that occur in Princess Anne Park to support their teams and other functions associated with the recreational activities and tournament play that's going on in the corridor. Again, the Hampton Inn and Suites is a quality Hilton product, considered to be an upscale, mid-price leader in the lodging community or lodging segment. It will have all of the various amenity packages that come with this product to include, you know, free breakfast, flexibility with reservations, you know, certainly accommodate the business community. As I mentioned earlier, we think it's very accommodating and from a price point also to service what we think will be the traveling public with regard to sports teams, families, and the children and their parents that will, no doubt, look at this as a viable option for their hotel accommodations when in the city. The product, the Hampton Inn, I'm sure council is familiar with their product, but it is a well-funded and well-supported product by the Hilton brand, a number of facilities throughout the country and overseas, and certainly, I think, will meet a lodging standard that we would want and look for with regard to the project. In looking at the benefits, they're clear, I think, and we've covered this, of course, in the past. Certainly, it is a vital, important need for us in that corridor with regard to all the things I've stated earlier. A lot of this traffic tends to either bleed from the city and into other cities within the region, and it certainly would be nice to capture some of this activity and have it remain in terms of their lodging requirements here in the city. It allows us to work, again, closely, as we have in the past, with Tywhar Community College. You know, the hospitality industry and tourism is very vital to our economy. There's been talk and constant conversations about leveraging and enhancing a workforce development program around the hospitality industry and around tourism to better position the workforce to be responsive to the change in hospitality needs and requirements here in the marketplace. And they are willing and have been very much interested in participating and possibly using this facility as what I would call a learning lab, if you will, as an internship or externship opportunity for students that are interested in the hospitality industry as a career. There are certainly some opportunities for our swim business, and we would look for that to be a part of this project, and there is a positive fiscal impact to the city. This is just a very high-level review of terms of revenues that will be accrued here to the city, and certainly, I think, at the end of the day, a very positive net return to the city having a facility of this type in our community. As I mentioned, we have gone through a number of critical, you know, infrastructure internal assessments necessary to bring the site into a form of development. We are, fortunately, in a very good place in terms of finalizing term sheet negotiations with the developer and operator. We're hoping to wrap that up in terms of bringing back to council for your consideration by the end of fiscal year, by June 30. We are looking to maintain some critical importance to us and the community and the college as it relates to the term sheet with regard to, you know, having the input on the architectural design, if you will, of the building, the room count, and making sure that we can come to terms with finalizing the development costs associated with infrastructure improvements regarding the site. There are some public improvements that are needed around the site. We would like to treat that as credit, if you will, toward the costs of the land that they would acquire and cap that at an amount that ultimately council will agree to. We have had approvals received from both the local college board as well as the Community College System Board. We've done and have completed an appraisal, and so the proposal and the acceptance of a $578,000 per acre price is in place with regard to this project. We have to go through a rezoning, if you will, and subdivide the parcel. There's an application process that the developer is going through now, looking to bring that forward. We're hoping, in the August-September timeframe, to the Planning Commission for their consideration. All along, of course, there's continued dialogue with Tywhar Community College. And finally, we want to bring forward to City Council a public hearing and an action and request for the subdivision and a rezoning application sometime during your fall, September, October timeframe. So this was meant to just give you an update. I know we've been dark a little bit with regard to where we are with the project. Again, it's still work in progress, moving, in my opinion, in the right direction. Lot of important hurdles have been overcome, particularly as it relates to the infrastructure issues that we had to address with regard to the parcel. We wanted to take the time today because we're coming to a point of some deadlines here, if you will, objectives to bring back to council for action, this presentation for you today. So with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions? Yes.
If you could, I listened to about the credit and the capital land price. If you could just reduce that to an actual example, illustration of what that means. I tried to translate operationally those words and the data rate they were expressed. So if you could just give me a concrete example of how that would be operationally applied, that'd be great.
Certainly, we can bring that back to you. In essence, what it is, there are certain public improvements that are required for this site to be developed. We would, in the case of that situation, look to the private sector developer to make those improvements, and for the costs of those improvements, discount a credit, a portion of the land price for that work. But we will detail that out to you specifically, and those costs specifically, so that we all understand and agree to those costs before we make that agreement.
I thought that was a subsidy, and you confirmed that's true. Thank you.
Back when we did this initially, the first time we did an RFP for it, I thought one of the most attractive parts of that bid was the relationship with TCC and using this for workforce development. But it kind of seemed to me somewhere along the line that we were hearing that that wasn't moving forward with the college to do that. Has that been overcome now, so that they will do it?
Yeah, I think they recognize what was contemplated in the earlier proposal was for there to be physical space for the college in the hotel. That has been taken out because when we looked at that and started costing that out, it led to what's essentially what's called a gap in the financing ability of the project and a gap that no one was willing to accept as their own. And so we said that element of having the college physically in the hotel no longer made financial sense to this project. But as a curriculum, as in, they would still house that curriculum on the campus of Tywhar Community College.
Ms. Henley, as I understand it, in talking with Dr. Colvani, and of course, we read in the paper that she's announced her retirement, and there are some issues ongoing with enrollments associated with our TCCs. So their financial long-term strategies may be in flex as we talk today. But it is their intention to utilize this parcel, which they own, to create a workforce development initiative, a training facility, and to expand their workforce development program beyond just the tourism industry, but to include that in there. And I think they came to the realization in our meetings with them when we discussed our desire to pull this back and move it in a more private, development-oriented, without an attachment to having to commit to the university, that we have so many hotels and so much tourism across the city that internships and opportunities for students to get practical and hands-on experience exist throughout our city, both in town center, at the resort, up on Shore Drive. And so I think they were limiting themselves by the geographic location here, and we have opportunities to allow those students to take on those kind of on-the-job training programs throughout the city. And I think they realized that. And so the conversation really translated to, you know, they use this as a main entrance to their college. And that is not an attractive entrance, if you've been there and understand that. What we envisioned for them, and I wish we had a bigger diagram, is is having their main entrance across from Lanstown off of Princess Anne, where that whole expansive entranceway to where you can see their new student center on the water, and what that'll do is subdivide, they'll have a parcel on this side of that entrance and a parcel on that side of the entrance. We have enough real estate, we can put those turn lanes in there. We can put the left turn lane off of the center and give them a much grander entrance into their community college. So those are two developments that evolved in our... Because we went there with a better, more long-term planning concept for the college to take a look at, and they, of course, relinquished. They were fine with allowing us to take city-owned property and move in this direction, workforce here, and then they agree this is not the grand entrance that anybody would want to have. They've invested so heavily down here, and they preserve that vista, that connectivity across from the visual that Lanstown High School gives them makes for a much grander plan.
How'd you arrive at the price per acre?
We had an appraisal done.
Beg your pardon?
We had an appraisal done, and $578,000 was the appraised amount to come back, which is an aggressive, aggressive number in that corridor.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
If you could share a copy of the appraisal, once available, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Juan.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, does anybody have any comments on the fiscal year 2018-19 Resource Management Plan?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think that anybody that does budgets in the federal, state, or local government, you know, realize it's a very emotional, very testing time for everybody. And no matter what happens, you know, some people walk away feeling good, and some folks don't. But the point is, though, I applaud the collaboration of this group of working together to try to, at least, you know, comprise something that hopefully everybody can live with. And I think we accomplished a lot of our goals in terms of the salary compression for public safety, making sure we have adequate money for the stormwater, but also the fact that, you know, listening to the people that spoke to us about, you know, the difficulty they're having, you know, in terms of raising taxes and everything. Well, once again, it's not a perfect budget, but I think it goes a long way to future collaboration. And the point is, though, I think we have to admit, going forward, we're going to have a number of fiscal challenges in the future that we're going to have to address. And one of the things I hope we can consider are maybe a couple modifications on the way we do things. In talking to a number of people, you know, over this process, you know, perhaps the idea of having public meetings before we even go into retreat to find out and kind of field test what the perception of the priorities are of, you know, the public out there. And then also, maybe through with the council, it's something that we can discuss in the future, is having a budget committee with the process improvement to take a look at the way we do budgets, and maybe if we can start looking at maybe some kind of modified balance scorecard where we evaluate priorities and a little bit more transparency, and, you know, find redundancies and things that we might be able to do more effectively and efficiently going forward. I think this would go a long way to demonstrate to the public that we're, you know, we're really being diligent. And I think the thing, that one value that we have in Virginia Beach, we have a tremendous amount of intellectual capital. We've got retired CPAs, we've got retired industry leaders, we've got retired admirals and generals that have dealt with massive budgets that had to deal with cutting and still maintaining efficiencies and operations. So I just think going forward, I think, you know, as a benefit to our public, you know, to maybe build a better mousetrap on how we do things. And, you know, I think it would be a great help to the council in making those tough decisions going forward. But once again, I applaud everybody at this table for the collaboration and the discussion, and I think it sends a wonderful tone for things going forward and, you know, working with staff. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We'll now go to City Council comments. Anybody have any comments they'd like to make, Ms. Henley?
I would just like to thank the city manager and all the public works folks, particularly the engineering people that accomplished that wonderful turn lane at the Punggol intersection. It is grand, a small project, but you cannot believe how such a little project could improve the traffic flow, and thank you very much.
Done in-house, Ms. Henley.
I know, in very short time.
Yes, ma'am.
Beat the time of two months or whatever it was. Great, it can be done. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
I know that a lot of y'all have been following my Cycle for Survival Crusher event. We had our fourth annual event this year, and we had over 500 people come out. And glad to tell you that we raised over $270,000. And cumulatively, we broke the million-dollar mark. 100% of that money will go to cancer research, and research saves lives. So it's just a real exciting thing that we're really... We have a small, little committee. Nobody gets a salary. And we're really excited about what we're doing.
Well, thank you for being a leader on that. All right, anybody else? Yes, John?
I know we have a consultant or an advocate up in Washington, but as anyone knows, OMB did put out a $19.5 billion reduction to the non-defense part of the President's '19 budget. It probably would be a good idea to get an assessment from them as to how that rolls down, because a lot of that's happening in the housing, education, all those, I'll call them soft science areas. And so that probably may or may not have some budgetary impact, but that did pass the House.
Got it.
So you might want to have someone give us an assessment on that.
All right. We'll now go to anybody else? We'll now go to the City Council Agenda Review.
Under Corbinixis, does anybody have any comments? Everybody okay with?
The open space acquisition, that'll be a no vote among us.
That's Items K, 1A and B?
Correct. For the reasons I universally stated.
Anybody else? Is everybody else okay with the rest of Item K?
Yes.
Okay. Item L, the budgets, we've got speakers. Okay, so we won't be putting that one on consent. Under Planning, Zaldi VR and James Paul VR, Kimsville?
We're good.
Good. Okay, Item M2, 23rd Fund Parking LLC, we have a speaker on that one, so we'll hear that one. Item 3, Willis Family Partnership, Change of Nonconformity, 318-320-34th Street, Beach District. We do have a letter from the applicant requesting a deferral to June 5. John's not here. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, Waves Motel, 1312 Atlantic Avenue, for condition use permit, Rayo parking lot. Everybody okay with that one? And then Jones at 1888 LLC in City of Virginia Beach. Ray Bulk Storage Yard, 1888 Virginia Beach Boulevard, adjacent parcel, District 6, Virginia Beach. Beach Boulevard, adjacent parcel, District 6, Virginia Beach. Everybody okay with that one?
Everything's from the beach.
Everything's from the beach. So we're going to hear Items, Item 2, and the budget. And nothing else under...
Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation or such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect a negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, Mid-Atlantic Arena LLC versus City of Virginia Beach. Public contract, discussion of the ward of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29, Norfolk Water Services Contract Extension. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, and appointee evaluations. May I have a motion?
Dismissed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Ern? Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor James?